All right. Just before we call this special meeting to order, if there's anyone here for the zoning hearings, it's in the room down the hall. I know there were some people here earlier, so otherwise, this is the budget presentation. With that, Angela, if you would call the roll.
Here.
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 Present.
Here.
Here. Thank you. And just for the record, Alderman Caballo is still recuperating from her surgery, and Alderman Brunelli is here, but he's also on the zoning board who's meeting tonight, so he may be stepping out at some point to go deal with some zoning issues. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a Silent Prayer, and I would ask that you keep our deputy police chief Fred Spagnola and his family in your prayers this evening. Fred lost his mother the day before yesterday.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic which stands on my nation under God, indivisible, and free of any injustice or wrong.
Okay, you should all have, in front of you at this point, copies of the mayor's proposed budget for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019, along with the capital improvement plan for the fiscal years 2019 to 2023, and then also the executive summary in effect of the mayor's proposed budget for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019. With that, the mayor had been here, but he had been called away to a meeting that was scheduled at the last minute late today that he needed to attend to. So we'll start with Mike LeBlanc, just for a few opening remarks, and then we'll go to Sarah Gary to walk us through the proposed budget. Mike?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As President Prenderouski mentioned, myself and Sarah Gary are here this evening to present to you an overview of the mayor's 2018-2019 proposed budget, as well as the proposed capital budget for 2018-2019, which also includes an overview of the projected capital projects that may be coming down the pike over the next four years. That booklet itself comprises a full five-year capital plan, but through this adoption process, it's only the 2018-2019 year that would be adopted. The budget process for the city generally begins in late December with a request that goes out to the various departments to compile their budget requests for the next year. Those budget requests are received in early January, and with that, the city's or the mayor's budget development committee begins a couple-month process of going through the department requests, evaluating the revenue projections that are coming both from the two major sources that are available, those being state aid and local property taxes. It has been another extremely difficult development process. As you may recall, back in October 2017, the state adopted, very late into the process, its biennial budget. We are in the first year of that two-year budget, state budget, which established the state aid that would be provided to Waterbury. As you may recall, back when that information was finalized, it was announced that Waterbury was going to be receiving approximately $5.6 million less than what it had projected in this year's budget, the 2017-2018 budget. At that time, the Budget Office provided an overview of how we were going to deal with that reduction from our estimates through utilizing contingencies that were set aside in the event of the possibility of reductions in state aid, which ultimately did materialize. And there were other components of local contributions from the General Fund for Capital Purposes that were not funded and were replaced with separate state grants allocated for capital purposes. The reason why I bring that up is ultimately that reset the stage or the baseline for what we were looking at for state aid as we began the budget development process for this next fiscal year, 2018-2019. So we were looking at a beginning position substantially less than where we were when we went through this process over a year ago. So those reductions had to be now built into the proposed budget that has been presented to you again in the booklets, and Sarah will provide a detailed overview of that this evening through the presentation. We felt that there were some given pressures on this budget that's being proposed from the standpoint that the motor vehicle mill rate cap through the state's biennial adoption process was increased from 37 mils to 39 mils for this fiscal year, and then increasing again to 45 mils for the budget year that we're discussing this evening, 2018-2019. So the taxpayers are going to face, the Waterbury taxpayers are going to face a greater burden with the increase of the motor vehicle mill rate going from our 37 mils to 45 mils. That is necessary, unfortunately, to make up for the reduction in the state reimbursement grant for the difference between the motor vehicle cap and our mill rate. So that reimbursement is now going to be predicated on the difference between 45 mils and 60 mils, whereas this year, that reimbursement was the difference between 39 mils and the 60-mil rate that we have here in Waterbury. So with that, we felt it was imperative, the mayor felt it was imperative, that we do what is necessary to hold the line on the mill rate for real estate and personal property. So that mill rate will be held flat at 60.21 mils for the next budget year. We were fortunate in that there was some grand list growth. The simple fact of the matter is with reductions in state aid and increases in fixed costs that have to be accounted for within the budget, again, those were the components that allowed us, at the end of the day, to establish a balanced budget without bringing forward an increase in the mill rate for real estate and personal property. This budget does not contain any service reductions. It's also important to note that this budget, this proposed budget, meets all the required funding obligations encompassing on the pension, health care, specifically the pension obligation bonds, and the annual required contribution on the pension fund. We are obligated to meet those commitments at 100% of the extra early determined requirements, and this budget incorporates all those funding components. I think it's also important to note that there are no gimmicks in this budget. It's a very conservative budget from a revenue projection standpoint. We're premising our revenue estimates based on what was adopted in the state's two-year budget. We have dealt with adjustments that have occurred during this fiscal year. We're very hopeful that there will be no further adjustments as we go into the next fiscal year. There is always that risk when you assess the state of the state, but at this stage of the game, we're relying upon the revenue estimates, again, that have been adopted in the state's two-year budget. We do believe this is an achievable budget. It's important, at the end of the day, that the city is able to continually close its books at the end of each fiscal year with a surplus, a budgetary surplus, even if it's a small amount. This budget reflects a continuation of the fiscal controls that have been in place for many years and the budgetary practices that are ingrained in Waterbury's budget development process. It's been a good many years since the Oversight Board was here in Waterbury. The progress here in Waterbury on its finances have been very good. It's reflected in our stable mill rate, and I think, I'm sorry, in our bond rating rate. That rate is a reflection, again, of the fiscal controls, the conservative budgetary practices, and the willingness to take the necessary steps that have to be taken in order to, again, ensure financial stability. This budget does assume certain departmental savings that will be met through holding some vacancies open for durations of time throughout the course of the year. There's not a lot of margin for error in this budget. Certainly, we have been impacted by the reductions in state aid in balancing that, again, with the growth in some fixed costs that we're dealing with. But overall, we're hopeful, certainly, that you'll find, as Sarah gives you a full walkthrough of the budget, that it presents, again, a budget that is balanced and one that meets the funding requirements and maintains the services as we proceed forward into the next fiscal year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah Gary to walk you through the presentation of the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Sarah Gary, Policy and Budget Management Specialist for the City of Waterbury. I'm here tonight to walk you through the mayor's proposed budget for FY19. As Mike mentioned, we once again used a budget development committee to advise the mayor during the budget process. The committee members were Merrill Larry, Joe Gary, and George DiAgostino from the mayor's office, along with myself from the budget office, and Mike LeBlanc and Sherri Koska from the Finance Department. I'd like to take this time to thank the mayor and the rest of the members of the committee for their dedication and hard work throughout this months-long process. I'd also like to give a special thanks to our photo stat unit of the Town Clerk's Office. They helped assemble and print the documents you have before you tonight, the General Fund Budget Book, the Capital Improvement Plan, and the copy of tonight's presentation. I'd also like to thank our IT Director, Dan Arapino, for helping to put this PowerPoint presentation together. And again, as Mike said, this process began back in December of 2017, when the departments submitted their budget requests, when they started formulating their budget requests, I'm sorry, and then submitted them by January, and for the past couple of months, the budget development committee has been reviewing those requests, meeting with a number of the department heads, and ultimately making funding recommendations to the mayor in order to arrive at this proposed budget. I'd also like to thank all of our department heads and their staffs for the hard work that they've done throughout this budget development process. We had to make a lot of difficult decisions. There's many cuts in this budget, and they cooperated with us through the entire process. So you can see that as we began the process, we had department requests in the amount of $421.9 million. This left us with a gap of $12 million between the requests and what we were projecting to be our revenue for FY19. We were projecting $409.9 million for revenue. This slide gives you a summary comparing the FY19 department requests to the FY18 adopted budget. The department requests, again, were in the amount of $421.9 million compared to our adopted budget for FY18 of $412.6 million. This left us with an increase of $9.3 million. This would be a 2.25% increase. As Mike alluded to, we experienced cuts in state aid during the current year, and those cuts are carrying over into FY19. So in order to keep the mill rate stable, we realized we would have to have a budget in the amount of $409.9 million to do this. This left us with a budget that's $2.7 million less than the current year, which is 0.66% less, meaning that we had to cut $12 million from the department requests. You can see here the major areas of the budget and the increases and decreases in the different categories. For the Education Department, for FY19, we're keeping the contribution at the same level of $158.4 million. The department did not request an increase in the general fund contribution, but their request is based upon finding $4.9 million worth of savings over the next couple of months before the budget is adopted. We do anticipate that there will be a $2.5 million increase in the Alliance Grant, which goes directly to the Department of Education. It is important to note that a portion of that grant must be used for reform purposes, so there are some strings attached to that funding. Our contribution to the Health Insurance Fund is staying the same at $76.5 million, so there's no increase in that area of the budget. Our debt service contribution is increasing by $1 million from $20 million to $21 million, and this will fund our robust capital improvement projects that have been going on for the last 10 years, and these have benefited the general government departments as well as the Education Department. Our contingency account is decreasing by nearly $5 million. In the current year, we have a contingency account of $5.8 million. We're proposing an account of $850,000 for FY19. It's important to realize that this $850,000 will only fund emergency and unanticipated expenses that may arise during FY19. These can be cost overruns in fuel, utility line items, as well as snow removal operations and various other expense line items. We do have several outstanding contracts in FY19. The contingency account does not fund any possible general wage increases that may be awarded through those contracts. If there are GWIs awarded, we would look to the departments to realize savings during the year to make up for the increases that may be awarded. There's $750,000 worth of decreases in our other internal service funds and operating charges. As Mike mentioned, there's an increase in the pension fund of $2.1 million. The public safety area of the budget increases by just over $1 million, and this is mostly related to the arbitration award that was given to the fire union in June of 2017. The Public Works Department's budget increases by $283,000, and all other departments decreased by about $1.5 million, which is how we get to the total decrease of $2.7 million. Again, in an effort to maintain a stable mill rate, the Budget Development Committee scrutinized all expenditure requests. When our work was done, we ended up at the $409.9 million budget, which was cutting $12 million from the department requests. It will be very important that these expenditures continue to be scrutinized throughout the fiscal year in 2019. Our Cost Containment and Oversight Committee will continue to work with all departments on a weekly basis and meet with them about the filling or leaving vacant positions, as well as all other expenses. To take you through some of the major takeaways of this budget, the first thing I'd like to point out is that FY19 is the third year that we will have two separate mill rates. The proposed mill rate for real estate and personal property is 60.21, which, again, is the same as the current year. The proposed motor vehicle mill rate is 45 mils, which is an eight-mil increase from the current rate of 37 mils. This is due to the cap placed on the motor vehicle mill rate by the state legislature. The cap is increasing to 45 in FY19. Therefore, we increased our mill rate to 45. We will receive a grant from the State of Connecticut in the amount of $5.1 million to make up for the revenue that we lose with the lower motor vehicle mill rate. Again, this is a smaller grant than we received in the current year because of the increase in the motor vehicle cap. There is a sewer rate increase included in the water pollution control budget. This was approved several years ago. You may remember there was a working group that contained members of the Board of Alderman at the time that studied water and sewer operations and recommended rate increases over several years. So the sewer rate increase that's included was previously approved, and there's no water rate increase. The sewer rate increase would result in an annual increase for an average homeowner of about $20. This budget continues to fund the elderly tax credit that was implemented several years ago. This helps our elderly residents to stay in their homes. The credit is included at the amount of $250, which is the same as FY18. As Mike mentioned earlier, we did see grand list growth. We had a revaluation that was completed as of 10/1/17. We saw $123.3 million of growth within the grand list. We're encouraged to see that property values are reflecting modest improvements. We're also excited to see that our economic development efforts are paying off in terms of grand list growth. The grand list growth on the real estate and personal property side allows us to increase tax revenues for that line item by $3.7 million. This is due to that growth. The current tax collections for motor vehicle line item will increase by $3.7 million, but that's mostly due to the increased mill rate. Again, the total budget is $409.9 million, which is a decrease of 0.66% compared to the current year. We do have continued stability in our general fund balance. It's now at $23.1 million. This allows us to budget $3 million worth of designated use of fund balance as a mill rate mitigation tool. We haven't had to use this budgeted use of fund balance in the past, and we anticipate that we will continue to not need it in the future. As Mike mentioned, our revenue structure is heavily reliant on two forms of revenue, that's property taxes and state aid. 60% of our revenue structure is made up of property taxes, and 34% is made up of state aid. This is a change from the FY18 budget, in which 58% of the budget was made up of property taxes and 36% was made up from state aid. So you can see that the changing landscape, as far as state aid goes, is making our budget more reliant on local property taxes. Overall, the mayor's proposed budget for FY19 contains $11.2 million less in state aid compared to our adopted budget. It is important to point out that after the budget was adopted, the state budget was adopted in October of 2017. The city projected originally that we'd receive about $5.8 million less in general fund revenue. We're now up to about $6.3 million less in state aid. So that means in the current year, we anticipate $142.1 million in general fund state aid, but we had budgeted $148.4. So the difference between what we're expecting to receive in FY18 and what we're expecting to receive in FY19 is a difference of about $4.9 million. We do receive state aid for capital projects, and that totals about $5.1 million for FY19. As far as our education cost sharing grant goes, we are expecting to receive $136.1 million, and again, that's based on the state's adopted biennial budget for FY18 and 19. The general fund portion is expected to be $113.6 million. This has been our base amount for quite some time now. The Alliance Grant, which, again, goes directly to the Board of Education, is expected to be $22.5 million, and this would be an increase of $2.5 million. So again, this pie chart shows you where our revenue comes from, totaling $409.9 million. You could see that the 58% comes from, I'm sorry, 60% comes from property taxes and 34% from state aid. Our use of fund balance, as well as recoveries from our enterprise funds, and all of our other revenue amounts to 6% total on the revenue side. This next slide shows our mill rate analysis. Three factors go into how much revenue we can collect through local property taxes. Those would be the grand list, the mill rate, and our collection rate of 96%. You can see from this page that we'll collect $238.1 million in property taxes. That's the FY19 budget. $218.8 million would be our budget for real estate and personal property taxes, while $19.3 million would be the budget for motor vehicle property taxes. You can find additional information on the grand list on page 27 of your budget books. The next slide shows the revenue that comes from non-tax sources. You could see that this revenue is declining by about 6% in FY19, and the decreases are on the state aid side. So the payments by other jurisdictions, the decrease of $8 million there would be state aid not related to education, and you could see on the education side, the state aid is expected to decrease by about $3.1 million. So compared to FY18, the 19 budget will be $10.3 million less in the non-tax revenue The next few slides show you our state aid for FY19. This is Exhibit G in your budget books. It can be found on pages 68 and 69. You can see on this page, in the far right-hand column, there's quite a bit of red, and that shows the state aid decreases that we'll be experiencing in FY19. The motor vehicle mill rate cap grant is a significant source of the revenue loss, as well as our ECS grant for FY19. You may remember, in FY18, we had anticipated a $5.4 million increase in the ECS grant. Ultimately, when the budget was adopted by the state legislature, they kept the ECS funding flat, and the increase that had been originally proposed by the governor didn't The next page shows you the reimbursement grants we received from the state. Two things to point out here are reimbursements we received for tax exemptions from the State of Connecticut. One is for exemptions for the elderly. You could see the decrease of $700,000. And the other is the Distress Municipality Industrial Incentive Program, a decrease of $300,000. Both of those programs were eliminated in the biennial budget. We had budgeted for them in FY18, so that's a loss of $1 million in the current year, and we're unable to budget them going into FY19, so that $1 million carries over into So you can see on this last slide of our state aid schedule, it shows you the decrease in the state aid at $11.2 million compared to FY18. Again, we aren't expecting to receive the $148.4 million that was adopted in FY18. We're now expecting to receive about $142.1 million. So next year, at $17.2 million, it would be about a $4.9 million decrease.
The next few slides give you information about the revenue changes in the budget. We've talked about several of these already. Again, our reliance on local taxes and state aid. We did see the grand list growth at just under 3%, leaving a net grand list of $4.27 billion. We do include a computation for a grand list decrease in the amount of 0.35% due to adjustments that may be made by the Board of Assessment Appeals. This is slightly more than what's in the current budget because it was a revaluation year, and we anticipate that there may be additional appeals. And again, the budget is based on two mil rates, the 60.2-
And again, the budget is based on two mill rates, the 60.21 on the real estate and personal property side, and 45 for motor vehicles. Together, these rates support the service level appropriations of $409 million. This budget continues to keep our current tax collection rate at 96%. At this tax collection rate, one mill is equal to slightly more than $3.6 million. Again, we'll see a sewer rate increase of about 5.4%, and this rate was previously approved, and there's no water rate increase. As Mike mentioned earlier, all state aid grant amounts included in this budget are those that were adopted in the state's biennial budget for FY18 and 19. And again, the ECS portion of, in the general fund, is expected to be $113.6 million, while the alliance grant is expected to be $22.5 million in FY19. We were able to increase the revenue in the current tax line items to $238.1 million from $230.8 million. This is a $7.3 million increase. As I mentioned earlier, the increase on the real estate and personal property side is largely due to grand list growth, while the increase on the motor vehicle side is due to the increase in the mill rate. Our budget for delinquent prior year taxes is the same as FY18, totaling $3.8 million. We were able to increase the budget for supplemental motor vehicle tax collections by about $265,000. And again, this is also due to the increased motor vehicle mill rate. The budget for interest on current and prior year taxes remains the same as FY18 at a combined $3.1 million. And again, we're continuing to budget the use of fund balance in the amount of $3 million, and this is less than 1% of the budget. Now we'll switch to the appropriations or the expense side of the budget. You could see this pie chart shows where the money goes. This information is derived from Exhibit E in your budget books, pages 65 and 66. It does include the allocation of benefits for these departments. You can see that over half of our budget is spent on education at 56%, followed by the public safety area at 16%, the retirement board at 11%, public works and operating charges both at 6%, and all other departments amount to 5% of the expenditures in the FY19 This next slide is one that we've shown for several years to highlight one of the largest sets of expenditures in our budget. You can see that the pension and health expenditures total $123.5 million. That equates to just under 34 mills. If you break that out into what could be attributed to the contributions for retirees, it's $85.6 million. So this amounts to over 23 mills, over 23 and a half mills that are related to our past fiscal liabilities. In the absence of these 23.57 mills, the city could have expected to have a mill rate in the area of 36.6 mills. Again, it's unfortunate that we have to deal with these past fiscal liabilities, but as Mike mentioned, we are committed to adequately funding our pension fund, as well as our health The next slide shows our position count for FY19 compared to the current year. In FY18, we have 1,048 positions that are approved in the budget on the non-education side. We had requests for 1,060 positions. That would be an increase of 12 positions. Our proposed budget funds 1,056 positions, which is an increase of eight. So we funded eight out of the 12 additional requests. The eight additional positions that are funded are eight new firefighter positions in the fire department, and this demonstrates our commitment to public safety. These positions will be substantially funded by a federal grant from FEMA. It'll fund 16 firefighters. Eight of them will be new, and eight of them are currently budgeted vacant positions. As I mentioned earlier, our Cost Containment and Oversight Committee continues to meet on a weekly basis and reviews position requests. We hold many positions vacant throughout the year, and this budget for FY19 builds in savings of approximately $500,000 from leaving positions unfilled. These positions are in a variety of departments, and again, our department heads work very closely with us, and they've been great at cooperating with us in leaving positions vacant when they can be left vacant. To go into a little more detail on our appropriations, again, as I mentioned earlier, we were left to cut $12 million from the department requests, and as I mentioned, the budget funds the eight new firefighter positions. Again, the contingency account is budgeted at $850,000, and this will not cover any potential general wage increases that may be awarded in the outstanding contracts. We will be working with departments to find savings in order for them to accommodate any increases that may be awarded during the year. The contribution to the health fund is kept at the same level at $76.5 million. The city's been successful in realizing savings due to our Medicare enrollment project and various other cost-saving measures that have been implemented in the area of healthcare. Since the Medicare enrollment project began in July of 2016, we've realized nearly $15 million in savings. The FY19 budget does increase the contribution to the pension plan by $2.1 million, and this is a combination of the annual required contribution increasing by $2.5 million and the payment on the outstanding pension obligation bonds decreasing by approximately $400,000. And as I mentioned earlier, we'll see an increase in our debt service contribution of $1 million for a total contribution of $21 million. We're phasing in increases in debt service over a period of years to support our capital As I've mentioned several times, the Department of Education is expecting to receive a $2.5 million increase in its alliance grant. We're hoping that the department can find efficiencies and cost savings in order to continue to operate with the general fund contribution of $158.4 million. The amount that the city pays towards employee benefits on behalf of the Education Department is at $70.3 million. That's what results in the city spending 56% of its general fund budget on education, our contribution to the department combined with the employee benefit costs. So all of that information on the revenue and the appropriations is how we arrived at a balanced budget of $409.9 million. Again, it was not an easy budget development process. There were several difficult decisions that had to be made. We made many cuts throughout all the departments. If you look at the expenditure summary pages in your budget book, you'll see that many departments have budgets in FY19 that are less than their FY18 budgets. And we'll strictly monitor spending, just as we have been doing over the last several years as we move into FY19. We'll continue to work with all departments to find various ways to come up with expenditure savings and again, meet the target of $409.9 million. Just to summarize a few of the funding policies that the Budget Development Committee works with, again, these have been the same from year to year. We're committed to keeping the local property tax burden stable. We were committed to including the sewer rate increase in the budget that had been previously approved. Again, continuing to fund the elderly tax credit to help our elderly homeowners remain in their homes. We're committed to funding education at an appropriate level to provide for the educational needs of all of our students. We're committed to funding the pension plan and the obligation we have related to health benefits. We're committed to funding our other internal service funds at the appropriate levels in order to maintain their fiscal health. We continue to try to find ways to find savings within our health fund. Again, we continue to fund a contingency account for unanticipated expenses that may come up throughout the year. In FY19, it's at $850,000. And we are continued, we have a continued commitment to keeping the city moving forward and issuing bond authorizations for a number of capital improvement projects. And in FY19, those projects are recommended in an amount of $9.5 million. We are proud of the fact that over the last seven budgets, this is the earlier administration's seventh budget, we have practiced fiscal restraint. Over these seven budgets, you can see that we've had spending increases of about 1.12% on average per year. And again, it is a testament to the work of the mayor and all of the department heads. To give you a brief summary on our capital plan, that's the smaller blue book that you have in front of you tonight. We're proposing capital projects in the amount of $26.4 million for FY19. You could see this page gives you a breakdown of the funding for all of the departments. These projects in the amount of $26.4 million are in a variety of areas. They include streets, parks, public safety, schools, and technology, as well as a vehicle replacement program. A variety of funding sources are used to fund these projects, including state grants, a minimal amount of our local capital improvement funding, and our local bond authorizations that will come before you at a later date. The next slide gives you a summary of the projects that we plan to seek bond authorizations for. The milling and paving of streets is something that we do each year at an amount of $2.5 million. A streetlight acquisition and LED conversion program at an estimate of $2.5 million. The municipal stadium outbuilding, which will house restroom facilities, as well as locker rooms at the stadium, that estimate is at $3 million. The purchase of a fire apparatus, it would be a new truck, too. That would be in the amount of $1.2 million. And there are two projects from the Education Department that would receive education, school construction funding from the state. Our local portion of these projects is shown on this chart. It would be the Generali School roof replacement at $100,000 on the local level, which is about 20% of the project, and a solar system for the West Side Middle School roof, the local portion would be about $200,000. So we are asking that you contemplate $9.5 million of bond authorizations. In closing, the offices of the mayor and budget will continue to closely monitor the current state legislative session. It is due to conclude on May 9th. This is a short session of the state legislature, so we'll keep an eye on what's happening at the state and if there are any changes to our state aid projections. We'll work with the board to schedule meetings to meet with various department heads. We'll also have to schedule the two required public hearings on the budget, and the budget must be adopted by June 8th pursuant to the city's charter. So I look forward to working with all of you on these items as we move forward over the next couple months. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. The next item would be to schedule the first required public hearing, and we have a narrow window pursuant to the charter with which to do that. So I would propose that we do the public hearing a week from tonight, which is Wednesday, April 4th, 2018. We'll start at 6:30 in the evening, if I can have a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Vrenelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion with the public hearing? Hearing none. All those in favor of April 4th at 6:30 here signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, so the public hearing will be scheduled, and the clerk's office will get the notices published. I will work with Sarah to work out a schedule sometime after that to have the meetings with the department heads. I think, as I have indicated before, over the last couple of years, we've done it as a committee of the whole, and I think that just works best because everyone really wants to participate in this process, so we'll do that again this year. And with that, this being a special meeting, there's nothing further that can come before this board, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Alderman Vrenelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you very much.